This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. The City of Rockaway Beach Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, July 17, 2025 at 5:00 PM will come to order. We stand with me and join in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's record who is in attendance. Commissioner Cole.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Here.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Present, but not here.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yeah.
Planning Commission liaison McGuinness.
Yes.
Mayor McNeeley.
Here.
And I, Bill Hassel, am present. The next item on the agenda is approval of the June 26, 2025 meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 26, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there, is there a second?
A second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the June 26, 2025 meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion, let's record how Commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. There are no presentations or guests scheduled for this evening. City Planner have anything to report? Oh, and by the way, I wanted, welcome Abram. His first meeting today, isn't it?
Yeah. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for having me coming.
Yeah, I do have updates today. I wanted to start by introducing myself. I'm Abram Tapia. I moved here from Eugene about three, four weeks ago. So I'm very, very excited to be here and I thank you everyone for the warm welcome. A little bit about me, I recently graduated with a Master's in Community Regional Planning at the University of Oregon. I worked at the city of Eugene for a year, helping them develop the comprehensive plan that they're working on, as well as a meeting that contextualized housing needs, which eventually we'll talk about. And I've also worked with emergency preparedness and evacuation planning. So that's a little bit about my, very brief on my background. So as you all know, I started my position at the City Planner on July 1st. Mary is our Public Works Director and so since I started my position, I've been catching up to speed, learning about processes and ordinances relating to this position. And I've been busy answering phone calls and emails. Since the last planning commission, the planning department has approved eight zoning applications, one of which was for the construction of a new dwelling. And as a separate note, we're also exploring funding sources for comprehensive plan updates and preparing our new housing needs analysis. So I'll have more updates for you this, our next meeting. On regarding the Luba case on July 2nd, the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals remanded the case and that was brought by the Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition. Luba sustained two assignments of error that were issued that case. I would like to remind everyone that it is an active case, so we'll keep our discussion public and we'll address that when, when the, when it comes to, to City Council. And we're meeting with the, we've been meeting with the attorney and to continue establishing what our next steps are going to be.
Just, just to interject here a little bit, Abram. So it's, it's an open remand and, and so we can take comment. The Attorney's advice is, is not to respond or comment on, on those comments. So just so, just so everybody's clear, I'm sure we'll, at the council meeting last night, we, we received some testimony. We'll probably receive some tonight, there's some in your packet. And that's okay, we just can't, we can't respond to that.
It's a good question. Is there someone assigned in the City of Rockaway to, so that we're not just silent? Is there someone who is the go-to for answering any questions?
Yeah, our City Planner. And we, we respond that we've received their testimony and we let them know we just can't comment on it. Okay, sorry Abram.
No, no, that was it for me. Well, we're still trying to figure out and develop our answers, so we're not, we're not being quiet on purpose. All right.
Just one question. And for clarification, it will be, it's remanded to the City Council, it won't be coming back to the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. A public hearing will be holding two public hearings this evening. Anyone wishing to provide public testimony shall sign up the public comments signup sheet with your name and mailing address. Senate sheet is located on the table outside the entrance doors to the meeting room. Planning Commission will now consider hearing on an application for conditional use for expansion and of non-conforming use in the C1 zone at 127 South Miller Street.
Would like to put on the record that the Mayor and I are stepping out during this testimony because it could get appealed to Council.
Thank you for that. It is 5:06 and 5:06 PM and I now open the public hearing on application for conditional use, expansion of a non-conforming use in the C1 zone at 127 South Miller Street. My name is Bill Hassel and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission for the City of Rockaway Beach, Oregon. The members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the Rockaway Beach City Council and serve as volunteers. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in the City of Rockaway Beach. In making those decisions, we must apply the law of Rockaway Beach and cannot vary from or change that law. If you think the law should be changed, you can work with the city to do that. But state law provides that applications be judged based on the law that existed when the application was filed. It is the Planning Commission's duty to be fair, impartial, and preserve the process for all participating in this hearing. I will start the hearing by asking staff to summarize its written report. Then the applicant and those in favor of the application can testify. Then witnesses who oppose the application or who have questions or concerns testify. If there is opposition or questions, the applicant can respond to them. The Planning Commissioners may also ask questions of the staff and witnesses throughout the hearing until the record closes. Then the applicant can make a closing statement. Then we will close the public portion of the hearing and Planning Commission will deliberate about what to do with the application. During deliberations, the Planning Commission may reopen the public portion of the hearing if necessary to receive additional evidence before making a decision. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written report, written testimony or both. But please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. You must testify orally or in writing before the close of the public record to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the City Council or the Land Use Board of Appeals, known as Luba. You must raise the issue clearly enough so that people can understand what is, what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue before the City Council or Luba. For the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit, Circuit Court. It is also important that you make the best case to the Planning Commission because although all of your decisions are subject to appeal, the City Council made decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. If you feel you need more time to prepare, you can ask the Planning Commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before we close the public portion of the hearing. If the Planning Commission holds an open record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the Commission makes a decision. If the Planning Commission continues the hearing, it means oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any reason, state law provides that we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all parties to allow the applicant to submit final arguments in support of an application unless the applicant waives that right. We must also comply with state law that requires the city to make a final decision, including appeals, within 120 days after the city staff found the application was complete unless the applicant waives that right. If you are testifying, please state your name and mailing address. If you wish to be notified of a continuous appeal or other action on this application, please print your name and complete mailing address on the form on the table outside the meeting room. If you refuse to provide your address, we may be unable to provide you with a copy of the final decision. Please make sure that your testimony is related to the applicable criteria or other criteria that you believe apply to this application. Planning staff will identify those criteria at the beginning of the hearing. Testimony also should not be repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witness. If we think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. A four-minute time limit on participants will be imposed. The applicant on behalf of the owner is Scoville Design Group. The applicant is seeking conditional use approval to expand a non-conforming use of property 127 South Miller Street. The applicant seeks to expand the existing single-family dwelling structure to add two additional stories above four, total of three stories. The applicant seeks to develop the lot which is zoned C1 commercial, which allows for multi-unit dwellings as a conditional use. The proposed building will have a similar footprint to the existing building on site. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. If any member of the Planning Commission has a personal bias or conflict of interest such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question, they shall declare it now. Are there any Commissioner declarations of conflict of interest?
Additional statements.
Jim?
Yes, I have a potential conflict of interest that I'll declare. I own a store, retail store that's just two doors down from this building, so there's a potential, you know, economic impact on that. In addition to that, I want to be clear that I was part of a group that several years ago made an attempt to purchase this building with a different purpose in mind. It didn't work out and on my side of things, it's all for the best, but there, there is, you know, potential appearance of bias due to those. Upon consultation with the City Manager about this, I believe that I can act fairly and impartially in this hearing and I intend to participate. And if anything further comes up, I may abstain from voting at the end, but I just want to be clear about those issues.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner declarations of potential bias? Or ex parte contacts? If any member of the Planning Commission has had any ex parte contacts since this application was filed on May 28, 2025, including site visits, they shall report it now. Are there any Commissioner declarations of ex parte contacts, including site visits?
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hassel, I will say that I frequently walk in front of the site, just casually in my regular routine, so I'm near the property frequently, but I have not deliberately visited it.
Thank you. I will start the hearing by asking the City Planner, Tapia, to present a staff report.
So much. Heard a quick presentation summarizing our findings from the staff report. Again, this is for conditional use application 2502. So the location of the property, as mentioned, is 127 South Miller Street. The lot in question is close to 5,000 square feet at 400, 4,000, sorry, apologies, 4,981 square feet. It is currently zoned as C1 commercial. It is surrounded by commercial uses to the north, South Miller Street, the train tracks and Highway 101 to the east, single-family dwelling to the south, and row homes to the For context, here is the site, it's in orange, I will change the color in the future so this is clear. More, more closely, this is the site in question. So the applicant is requesting to expand the non-conforming residential use. The applicant is seeking to add additional two stories and slash units to the current residence. This would be more, we'd consider it a triplex under our code. The property is located The property is located in the commercial zone, which does allow residential uses conditionally. And per section 7.07, 70 of our zoning code, we, the Planning Commission, can authorize enlargement or expansion of nonconforming use. A little bit more on detail of the site, this is the site plan for that site. And so I'm going to start by listing the criteria that you will be using to decide whether or not to approve or deny this application. I'm going to start by presenting the criteria and then I'm going to present my staff findings for each of these criteria. So the first criteria that you will be assessing this application is the proposed use is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan. The second criteria, and I'm going to note that this is not applicable to this proposal, is the location, size, design, and operation characteristics of the proposed use are such that the development will have a minimum impact on surrounding properties. And again, the standard is not applicable to multi-unit dwellings, manufactured dwelling subdivisions, and manufactured dwelling parks, but we will not consider that. The third criteria is the use will not generate excessive traffic. And this is when compared to traffic generated by uses permitted outright and adjacent, and adjacent streets have the capacity to accommodate the traffic generated. Criteria four is public facilities and services are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Oh, yeah, yeah, apologies. I didn't duplicate the numbers. So criteria five would be the site physical characteristics in terms of topography and soils is appropriate for the intended use. And criteria six would be the site has adequate area to accommodate the proposed use. The site layout has been designed to provide appropriate access points, onsite drivers, parking areas, loading areas, storage facilities, setbacks, buffers, utilities, or other facilities which are required by city ordinances or desired by the applicant. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to present my findings for each of those criteria. And so for the first criteria regarding the comprehensive plan, find that the staff finds that the criteria has been met. The comprehensive plan outlines a need for additional residential housing and superson location of housing in commercial area, especially if that, if that use is already residential. The comprehensive plan supports the location of housing in the commercial areas, I noted. While the Planning Commission can ask for commercial use on the ground floor that is for residential uses that are new. Since the residential use of the lot in question is not new, there are no requirements for the ground floor retail. And due to the comprehensive plan notes, due to the limited development areas within Rockaway Beach, the, where it can occur that the proposed, that we should allow for denser housing in areas that are suitable for, for development. And this proposal does meet that or follows that principle. And then my final finding is that the city housing strategy encourages permitting the development of multi-unit dwellings throughout most of the city and encourages higher densities of multi-unit development, which have, which the proposed development includes. For the second criteria, again, it's not applicable. For the third criteria, I also find that the criteria have been met. The proposed addition will not generate additional traffic when compared to traffic generated by uses permitted outright in this zone and adjacent streets have the capacity to accommodate traffic generated by three residential units. The proposed addition is planned for residential uses, which will limit the amount of traffic and parking demands to the property when compared to commercial uses. And finally, my final finding is the proposed element above South Pacific Street and South Miller Street, and both streets have capacity to accommodate traffic generated by the proposed units. The fourth criteria, I'm realizing that I am not summarizing this. The fourth criteria has been met. The property is serviced. The fifth criteria regarding the physical characteristic has also been met. The topography and soils are adequate for the proposed addition. And the final six criteria has also been met. The area is adequate to, for the proposed addition. Additionally, they are exceeding the, providing parking when it comes for the, our parking requirements for triplexes. That is it. So in conclusion, I find that this, this application meets the criteria.
Does the commission have any questions for staff regarding this application? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that there was no variance to allow residential and commercial in 1926 when this was. But I'm mindful that it is in a commercial area. I'm wondering, because we do have comprehensive plan regarding setbacks, et cetera, street facing back for residential and commercial, do we care about 30% landscape requirement minimum and things like that? Because it looks as though those two stories are going to go over the existing backyard, which I know it looks like it's gravel, but what, what criteria do we use for now this residential? I'm wondering, from two different streets, different setbacks?
Yeah, so for the overall sitting of the building, we'd be following the commercial zone criteria. And the commercial zone does not have setbacks in that area.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And this is just for, I could look it up, but I haven't, which is what is the requirement of parking for, per unit? And is it different residential versus commercial?
Yeah, so for, for the off-street parking requirements, our zoning ordinance outlines the parking requirements for different types of units. So they're not necessarily tied to the zone. For a triplex, it would require two parking spaces. And from the site plan they're providing for. Did I answer the question?
Can I ask a clarification about that?
Go ahead.
I, I apologize if I'm wrong here, but I was under the impression that it was two per unit was required in this area. Wasn't that the precedent that was established? There was a similar application to develop some residential units in this area a few doors down. It was heard by this commission last fall. And I believe that it was rejected on the grounds that it didn't have two spaces per unit.
The off-street parking requirements are, were newer. They're part of the middle housing updates that were done. So those were, came into effect, I believe, I might be wrong about this, but Feb, in February of this year. And so the, for single-family dwellings or mobile homes, the parking requirement is two, two parking spaces.
Thank you. One other technical question, quickly, sorry. The property is currently has a short-term rental license for the existing unit. Will the additional units be able to come in under that license and be short-term rentals? Or will they have to go on the waiting list like other properties?
That is a fantastic question.
Yeah, I'll, yeah. They have one license for one unit and if they need additional, they'll need additional licenses for those other units and they'll have to go on the waiting list.
Does the applicant intend to make three units or just make three stories? I don't see in the application that it's going to be three units, only, you know, additional room for additional, you know, stores, you know, housing with people, you know, capacity for more people. Is that something that we know for sure? Or is that something we should address with the applicant?
From my understanding, it's multiple units, but I think it would be best to address it with the applicant.
Thanks. Can I get a little bit more clarification on the parking? Sorry. So if it's a triplex, wouldn't, is each unit just required one parking place? And that's why three was the actual number versus?
Yeah, I feel like I can, I can read what the code says, but this for off-street parking space requirements for triplex, it requires one space for lots less than 3,000 square feet, two spaces for lots greater than or equal to 3,000 or less than 5,000 square feet, and three spaces for lots greater than, greater than or equal to 5,000 square feet. So it's not tied to the amount of units.
Do we know, do they intend for those two new units to be short-term rentals? Or are they going to be long-term rentals? Or have they specified?
I don't know the intentions of the applicants.
Thank you. I know that it says that we encourage now more density for residential. Yes, we do. That's why we did the great middle housing. But it's also in our comprehensive plan that it states way back that we will need for the future more commercial space. And so that's why, that was a great question. Is this going to be more residential units? Is it just going to be a three-story? I'm very concerned because setbacks were supposed to be commercial, but then parking spaces were saying residential. So which guidelines should we be following? And I see a need for consistency from us.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. And definitely in terms of findings, you can find out the comprehensive plan, you know, the need for commercial states could outweigh potentially the need for residential states. That is your prerogative.
Any comments?
Just to clarify, we will have another time for commission discussion after the technical questions? Okay, thank you.
I looked at the comprehensive plan too, because I know that we had looked at the commercial, first floor commercial requirement that was put into our comprehensive plan to encourage our little, our very tiny core of downtown to have commercial. So when we have, you know, people walking down the street, they're not walking by a lot of houses. They're actually, you know, businesses that they might be able to frequent. And in the comprehensive plan, you know, it does say the plan supports the location of housing in this commercial area, particularly in conjunction with businesses. Where the new residential uses are allowed in the downtown commercial area, ground floor retail uses should be required. This is common with many of the businesses that are present there and should continue. So I think that it's important that we find out, you know, is this going to go from one residence to three residences? Does that change it into, you know, a new residential use that we really should consider requiring the first unit to be a commercial area?
It was, I think I caught a question there. And my interpretation is since it's an expansion of a nonconforming use, then the use isn't new. But you are welcome to interpret the comprehensive plan differently.
All right. Are the applicants present? And would they like to provide any additional information on the application? If so, please stand at the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening all. My name is Josh Bennett. I'm representing Scoville Design Group, which is representing the applicant. First of all, I want to thank you for all your time. And a lot of you are volunteering your time because you care about this community and you want to see things happen the right way, and we appreciate that. So just a couple of comments I'd like to make. We, right now, it's currently be used as only residential. To the best of my knowledge, the applicant's intention is to keep this a single-family dwelling. But what this does is this allows them to, in the future, to be able to expand the lower area to be used as commercial. So with what it's allowed to be right now, it's only residential. And with the concern for wanting more businesses, they don't have their business mind planned exactly yet. But this expansion would allow them to use part of that lower floor for a commercial application in the future. Similar to, and I can't reference exact application numbers, but we have a project right here on Beacon that we've applied for a similar situation where we were approved to be able to go up of the stories with the intent that in the future, the applicant would like to use the bottom space as a commercial. And in the exact same situation, it's currently a single-family dwelling where there's no commercial application. So with, with the intention of expanding that commercial use, as things are now, if this, for example, were to get denied, it would stay residential and we'd see no commercial use being used in that area. So I think it not only helps with the community with giving more beauty in the homes because of the addition and the remodeling and the, of what's going to happen to the current home, but it also allows for a commercial application in the future, which is what the applicant would like to do. So we talked about trying to be consistent, which I appreciate very much. But sometimes the law allows us to have a variant where we can use both commercial and residential applications on the same lot. And this is an example of one I think that fits perfectly into this where it allows for that expansion, not only for that single-family dwelling, but also for that to become the commercial in the future when the applicant is able to get lined up and get that going. So I don't know if that helps, but that's just some of the comments I'd like to make pertaining to some of the concerns that you guys have.
So anybody have, go ahead, Maxie.
I did not endorse the Beacon, by the way. I did not vote for it. The.
Still appreciate it.
You said single-family dwelling several times, so it is a three-story single unit. It is not three different units.
To the best of my understanding, it is going to be a single-family, but it allows for the expansion of commercial. If, if I need to check on that, if that's going to have a bearing on the decision, maybe I need to request this to be moved forward a little bit so that I can get an answer from the client. I do represent the client, but I don't know every detail as I'm kind of a middleman. But that's a great question.
Any other questions from the commission?
Is the current structure being demolished in order to do the three stories?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We had architects and engineers come and test the foundation and walls. And we're going to be building on top of the current foundation.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Well, I guess my, I don't know. I won, I don't know if my question's really for you, so.
Okay, no.
My question is, why are the city planner, if there was something in the application that indicated that it would be a triplex, was it just the three stories? And so there was no, yes?
I didn't mean to cut you off. If you'd like to finish.
That's all. I just wanted to know why we thought it was going to be a triplex, but it's really just a single family.
Full transparency, I have recently taken the baton from Julianne, who was in my position and was doing a great job with this. Had Julianne still been working in this position, she have, it'd blow your mind. She has a lover. She'd have all the answers.
Yeah.
So he's probably more accurate in that area. And maybe I misspoke, which is again why I said, maybe I need to get some clarification on that. But he, he's actually seen this project for longer than I have. I've only recently, in the last few weeks, come in and, and started learning about this. So, yes, ma'am.
Would you be able to answer, in what ways are they going to be reconfiguring, doing the remodel to make the ground floor amenable to commercial purposes? Are they going to take the kitchen upstairs? Do you know that?
I do not have that information. Again, I'm speaking with what knowledge I believe I have. We do not have a full design as of yet, because that costs money. Architectural and design costs money. And we wanted to make sure we crossed the right bridges in the right order. the right bridges in the right order. Spend money in the right direction, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, I have a question for the city. Would it be possible for us to have this matter put over so we could have our answers, our questions answered a little bit more clearly?
It's a procedure. Yeah, uh, as we, as we move on here, um, the applicant will have an opportunity to submit additional testimony. Uh, so we can, we can hold the record open and revisit this in August.
We have no one signed up for public testimony. Is there anyone online who would like to submit testimony?
No online guests.
Okay.
I think my four minutes is up.
Thank you.
So don't have any testimony from the public. And therefore, we have, if any staff wish to clarify or respond to any issues or questions, we pretty much covered it.
Hey, yeah, that's a clarifying question. Do you want me to come up here?
Yeah, please.
So the recording
For everybody to hear.
I get some clarification on what information we need to have. That way, I don't just come back guessing based on our discussion. What what are the concerns that we have that you would like to see answered moving forward?
I can speak for myself. Um, I would like to have the question answered. You know, is it going to be three separate units? Or is it going to be just one remodel of a house making it bigger? And also, what is going to be done on the first floor to make it uh easily amenable to commercial uses in the future?
Perfect.
Anyone else?
I'll pass it when I type, so bear with me.
Because I don't think I
And of course, these questions will be on the recording, which you'll be able to access at a later time.
Okay.
As a single, because it's a single family, it's going to remain one uh short term rental license. It will be, it will still remain the one short term rental. Yes, just bigger.
Okay, my question is if it is two more units, are they planning on those to be short term rentals? Or are they going to be long term rentals? Which is what we really need.
So our our code's pretty clear. Each unit would need its own license. There's a cap on the licenses.
Yeah. They'll have to
It would have to be a long term. So they're waiting list. And if you guys approve that or not, it would either stay long term or carry on up to whoever approves those things.
Nancy?
Thank you. If it is a single unit, it's now three stories. It's got to be all three stories are a short term rental because they're all connected unless they are separate units.
Right.
Makes sense.
It's just a big one. A big one. Bigger house.
I can tell she's on our team. She's booked.
Clarification question about that. Um, i- if it, uh, for you, I guess, Abram, if it is a single unit, a large, you know, two, 3,000 square foot unit that maybe is four or five bedrooms, would that affect parking requirements at all?
Um, I, depending on whether or not it's uh several units or a single unit, it's going to affect my findings in general. So I'll have a specific answer to that. But if it's, are off street parking requirements now for a single family dwelling is two parking spots? So it would not, it would still not affect the the parking?
Okay. And then I would also add, if I'm allowed to continue, if I've had my four minutes, tell me to sit down. But I would also add that when this um individual purchased this property two years ago, um, previous to them purchasing it, the the county and the city had both approved it as a residential use. And they purchased it that way with having the commercial and residential opportunity. So because um from discussion with the city and the county, they have paperwork to show that that happened. They don't have the paperwork trail that they would normally have to see that the process was followed the way normally we would have followed the process. So they they're coming here trying to clear things up a little bit. It's their understanding they have the ability to do this anyway, but they they just wanted to get it in the right process because they, nobody wants to trick anybody here. We want to make sure you have the real information of what's happening so that you can make a real informed decision, so.
Um, I just have a question then. Um, I think it might be more for the city. Isn't the the request for the three stories above the usual um height limitation for a residential structure?
I don't have an answer for for that right now if it's a single family dwelling. Um, but for a triplex, we don't have height estimations at this point. It's just we're deciding whether or not we're expanding the the residential use.
And as a builder, I can answer, we've built many three story homes here in Rockaway um as a residential only. Um, and then there's also, of course, the three story. You know, everybody's seen the skinny tower if you drive by and all those. But that if that helps answer your question at all.
I do, it's my understanding that they're zoning, you know, in certain areas, it can't be three stories, but in certain areas, it can be.
It's a height of 24 or 35 feet, depending on where you are. Correct.
I'll be back for a zoning permit if it approves. And with all the rules, we'll make sure all the rules are followed.
We talked about the design not being fully complete yet. We would have to comply with whatever the zoning things are as long as we get the approval to 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 do the project. Thank you.
Does commission have any further questions of staff or applicant before we close the hearing tonight?
Um, Commissioner, we should uh continue on with public testimony.
Okay. Additional public testimony?
Bottom of page seven.
Were there any, uh, any votes signed up?
Oh, there's no sign up for the
Okay, good.
Nobody has a good issue to pick up.
Okay. No further testimony for the commission tonight. I can now close the public hearing for conditional use 25 dash two at 5:43 PM. Unless waived by the applicant, the city shall allow the applicant at least seven days.
Mr. Chair, uh, you're at the point in the, uh, on page nine. I believe the commission has has asked any for the clarifying questions of staff?
Yes.
So uh, the applicant has opportunity for final word. Do you have any further?
I just like talking here. This is going to be kind of an odd question, I think. Would we only need to reschedule this for another time if we don't have enough votes? I mean, is this somewhere where we would vote? And if we get it passed, we don't need to?
Thank you. City planners pointed out that, I believe you did say that the hearing was closed, so let's just make a statement to reopen the hearing.
Okay.
Stand up time, please.
Go ahead and reopen the
The hearing is reopened, yeah?
Hearing is now reopened again. 5:44.
I, to concise my question, are we going to vote? And if it if it's not something that's accepted, we'll need to revisit it? Or if?
You'll have an opportunity to waive your right to submit additional testimony?
Okay.
Or not? It's up to you.
Okay.
Based on what you heard tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll we'll get to that here shortly.
Are we leaving it open so that we can get the answers to the questions we had before we do a vote?
You, I'll see if there's an option.
Okay.
If the commissioner just followed along with the script here, we'll get all that covered today.
So um
Need to close.
Does commission have any further questions of staff or applicant before we close the hearing? There's no further testimony from the commission tonight. I now close the public hearing for conditional use 25 dash two at 5:45 PM. Unless waived by the applicant, the city shall allow the applicant at least seven days to submit final written arguments, but no new evidence, facts, documents, dates, or testimony to support their application. Would the applicant like to submit additional written arguments within the next seven days? Or do you waive that right?
I think you guys have some valid questions.
Okay. Have seven days to submit their written argument. Since the applicant wishes to submit the final written argument, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach Planning Commission set July 24th, 2025 as the date for the applicant to submit its final argument and the date upon which the record for this conditional use 2502 will close and to set deliberations on this conditional use 2502 to 5:00 PM on July 20th, is it?
August 21st.
Oh, okay. August what?
August 21st.
21st, okay. August 21st, uh, 2025 at Rockaway Beach City Hall. And uh, would somebody like to do a motion? Oh, there's a motion.
I move to set July 24th, 2025 as the date for the applicant to submit its final argument and the date upon which the record for this conditional use will close. I further move to set the deliberations on this conditional use number 25 dash 02 to 5:00 PM August 21st, 2025 at Rockaway Beach City Hall.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Been moved and seconded to move the so July 24th, 2025 as the date for the applicant to submit his final applicant, his final argument and the date upon which the record for this conditional use 25 dash 02 will close. It is further moved to set deliberations on this conditional use to 5:00 PM August 21st, 2025 at Rockaway City Hall. And would the person making the motion want the floor for any further discussion?
No, thank you.
No further discussion. Let's record how the commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now the motion carries. Planning Commission will now consider an approval for variance, reduction in lot width located on Tillamook County Assessor's Map number 2N1020 BD lot 6300 by conducting a public hearing. It is 5:49 and I now open the public record, a public hearing on an application for a variance for the reduction in lot width located on public assessor's map number 2N1020 BD lot number 6300.
My name is Bill Hassel and I am the chair of the Planning Commission for the city of Rockaway Beach, Oregon. The members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the Rockaway Beach City Council and serve as volunteers. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in the city of Rockaway Beach. In making those decisions, we must apply the law of Rockaway Beach and cannot vary or change that law. If you think the law should be changed, you can work with the city to do that, but state law provides the applications must be judged based on the law that existed when the application was filed. It is the planning commission's duty to be fair, impartial, and preserve due process for all participating in this hearing. I'll start the hearing by asking staff to summarize its written report. Then the applicant and those in favor of the application can testify. Then witnesses who oppose the application or have questions or concerns can testify. If there is oppositions or questions, the applicant can respond to them. The planning commissioners shall also ask questions of staff and the witnesses throughout the hearing until the record closes. Then the applicant can make a closing statement. Then we will close the public portion of the hearing and the planning commission will deliberate about what to do with the application. During deliberations, the planning commission may reopen the public portion of the hearing if necessary to receive additional evidence before making a decision. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. But please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. You must testify orally or in writing before the close of the public record to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council or to the Land Use Board of Appeals, known as LUBA. You must raise an issue clearly enough so that people can understand what is what is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue before the city council or LUBA. For the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to those issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court. It is also important that you make your best case to the planning commission because although all of our decisions are subject to appeal, the city council may decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. If you feel you need more time to prepare, you can ask the planning commission to hold open the record or continue the hearing. You must make that request before we close the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the planning commission continues the hearing, it means oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any reason, state law provides that we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of the application unless the applicant waives that right. We must also comply with the state law that requires a city to make a final decision, including appeals, within 120 days after the city staff found the application was complete unless the applicant raises that right. If you are testifying, please state your name and mailing address. If you wish to be notified of a continuance, appeal, or other action on this application, please print your name and complete mailing address on the form on the table outside the meeting room. If you refuse to provide your address, we may be unable to provide you with a copy of the final decision. Please make sure your testimony is related to the applicable criteria or other criteria you believe apply to this application. Planning staff will identify those criteria at the beginning of the hearing. Testimony also should not be repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If we think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. A four minute time limit is imposed on participants. The applicant is Gloria Mayor Johnson. Applicant is seeking approval for variance for a lot on Beach Drive in Rockaway Beach. The applicant is seeking a variance to decrease the required lot width for lots over 5,000 square feet from 50 feet to 37.5 feet. The applicant plans to construct two new residential buildings on the lots. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. If any member of the Planning Commission has a personal bias or conflict of interest such as family, financial, or business relationship with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question, they shall declare it now. Are there any commissioner declarations of conflict of interest? Are there any commissioner declarations of potential bias? If any member of the Planning Commission has had any ex parte contacts since this application was filed on May 29th, 2025, including site visits, they shall report it now. Are there any commissioner declarations of ex parte contacts, including site visits?
I did a site visit to take a look at the lot just to see what the surrounding area looks like.
And any others? We'll start the hearing by asking City Planner Tapia to present the staff report.
Follow my presentation very similar to the format of the previous presentation. So again, this is for the variance application 2501. So a little bit of information on the property. It is currently an undeveloped lot, therefore it doesn't have a street address, but the lot, the map and tax lot number as read before is 2N1020BD 6,300. The lot size is 13,910 square feet. I added the dimensions of the lot as well. The dimensions of the current lot is 75 feet by 186 feet. The zone in question is R1, the single-family and duplex zone. The surrounding uses for this lot is single-family dwellings to northeast and south with the Pacific Ocean to the west, so it is an oceanfront property. So here's the location zoomed out and more in detail. So the applicant's request is to seek to decrease the required lot width for lots over 5,000 square feet. The owner is seeking to subdivide the current 13,910 square feet lot into two 6,975 square feet lots, apologies, with 37.5 feet with each for lots under 5,000 square feet. The requirement is a minimum of 35 feet. Tillamook County did let us know that the 37.5 feet width would meet road approach standards to allow a driveway access. And as per our zoning code ordinance, section 3.010, for lots over 5,000 square feet, the minimum lot width is 50 feet. And for in terms of granting variance, the Article 10, Article, probably Article 8 of variances does authorize Funding Commission to authorize lot area and dimension variance. So a little bit of context, this is more a site plan that the applicant provided us on what the plans are for that lot, that division. All right. So again, I'm going to list the criteria and then I will, this time I will, I promise I will summarize my findings. So for criteria for granting a variance, and again, these are the only criteria that we will take into account when granting the variance. So the first one is that a strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified requirements would result in particular difficulty or unnecessary hardship and would be inconsistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. I added the A and B for my clarity sake and I thought I would add it here as well. The second criteria, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or to the intended use of the property, which do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone. The third criteria is that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially interest to properties or improvements in the near vicinity. And the fourth criteria, that the granting of the variance would support policies contained with the comprehensive plan. So for summarizing my findings for each of the different criteria, so for the first criteria, the applicant notes that their desires for the development of two single-family dwellings to reduce the financial burden of development, subdividing the lot prior to development would permit greater flexibility for development. So I would say that the criteria has been met. For the second criteria, exceptional, extraordinary circumstances, the lot in question is larger than other, has a larger square footage than other lots in the area, particularly oceanfront So oceanfront lots on Beach Drive generally have over 5,000 square feet and their widths do not always, are not always above 50 feet. So I recommend that this criteria has also been met. In terms of the third criteria regarding the public health and safety, residential uses in a residential area did not find to be detrimental to public health or safety or the welfare. So I move that that also, that that criteria has also been met. And then in terms of granting, with the granting variance, support policies contained in the comprehensive plan, similar to our previous case, our comprehensive plan notes need for additional residential housing encourages development on smaller lots. With that, I recommend that we approve this variance.
Thank you. Are the applicants present and would they like to provide any additional information on the application?
There's opportunity to ask that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Commission, any questions for the staff regarding the application?
Oh, sorry. First, okay. In this particular area, in the Nadana Beach area, some of the houses we understand are connected to sewer and some of them have septic. Can you tell me if this lot is going to be septic or is that connected to a sewer system?
So the current utilities that this lot has is water and electricity. So the, we don't offer, I believe this lot is in the urban growth boundary.
It'll be septic.
Septic.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you. Because of the middle housing that we just planned, we talked about parent lots, child lots. At some time in the future, they want to build two dwellings. I want, just want to be really clear, there's no time limitation for when they can build. They, we're just basically splitting the lot and allowing them to do that because maybe they can sell one of the lots and keep one of the lots. I just want to make sure we're really clear with time limits and stuff.
So our zoning code is as clear that units on separate lots are not considered middle housing. When they're on the same lot, it is middle housing. We do allow for middle housing lot divisions, but that's a different process than what the applicant is requesting.
Follow up, does that mean they could sell one of the lots? I mean.
Yes, yeah.
They're just, they're making two, two lots out of one. You know, but, but we were, yeah. It means it's open. There were others. Do we, I noticed on there, well, do we have any requirements regarding vegetation? And the removal or the non-removal of vegetation, particularly in an erosion area like beach front?
Yeah. For granting the variance, no, but for dune development, yes. I'm sure if this lot is on a dune, I believe, yes, but then there is construction vegetation requirements for preventing erosion.
It's not related to what we're talking about. It's just, can we split the lot or not split the lot? That's the question.
Easy.
Any other question? So are the applicants present and would they like to provide additional information on the application? If so, please stand at the podium and state your names for the record.
My name is Gloria Johnson. I don't want to speak about the lot, but I do want to give you a little background on the lot. I have owned him for 40 years and for 39 of those years, I paid taxes on two separate lots. You cannot build anything on a 25-foot lot. So my son came to me and said, Mom, I think he would like to be something for your grandchildren. Why don't we build on your beach lot? Are you willing to do that? Because he said, I would like to do it if you're willing. So the first thing we had to do is get a lawyer and go to Tillamook County, who I had been to 10 years ago, wondering why do I pay the same taxes on two lots when you can't build on the 25-foot lot? And they, I don't remember what they told me, so we stayed that way. So my grandson is an attorney and he came over and got the paperwork done and combined it into one lot so that we could build on one lot and not have 25 feet of nothing sitting there. And then when we came down and talked to Mary, turned it over to Scott, and we started to decide what we would or could do, that's how we wound up here. Thank you.
My name is Scott Keehrli. Here representing her son who couldn't be here tonight and I'm kind of consulting with him. I was a general contractor for 40 years in the state of Washington. We've been looking at this and by your comprehensive plan that you're adopting or already have, we could do this, build the unattached duplex and then split it and sell one. But to do that, we'd have to build both of them at the same time, which is kind of cost a lot of money all at once. By doing this, you can build one and they're still not sure if they're even going to sell it, but they might keep it all in the family and build another one in a year or so. So we did do it. If you don't vote for this, we still can do it by your new comprehensive plan, but it just cost us a lot of money all at once. By doing this, we can save some money as we go through. So that's, I mean, there's a lot down the road that's only 40 feet that's having a house built on it right now. So it's not like we're trying to make something extraordinary and conservative. And so, I mean, that's about all I got to say. And if you have any other questions about.
Scott, would you please confirm the spelling of your last name?
Keehrli, K-E-H-R-L-I.
Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will answer you on this construction stuff. We saw, I'm sorry, I didn't, I can answer you on cutting stuff down. You know, you don't want to cut anything. You want to maintain the dunes. We don't want the lot to go out in the ocean. And you know, Mary showed us an interesting graph because the water comes and it goes and it comes and it goes. And nobody can say, you know, you're building along the ocean and it's forever because we all know it can't be forever necessarily. But so you don't, nobody deliberately cuts anything down on the dunes. You go higher. You're smart. Yeah. If you can.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Now here testimony from any person in the public who wished to speak in favor of this proposal. Remember, the testimony must be directed to the applicable standards and criteria for which this appeal was filed as outlined by the staff report, beginning with those in favor of the proposal. The sign-up sheet does not have anyone wishing to testify in favor. Do we have anybody remotely that, for the public? Next, we'll hear from anyone who has neutral testimony or comments. I have the sign-up sheet, but it has nobody registered for neutral comments. Do we have anybody watching remotely for neutral comments? Finally, we'll hear from anyone in opposition to the proposal who would like to speak. I have the sign-up sheet. First, hear from Paul Grover. And state your name and address.
Okay. My actual name is Juan Paul Grover, so we can get it open when I go up. My address is 26040 Nadana Avenue. Been here, bought the house in 2019. My main concern is there have been, it's odd to me that a person to build in Nadana has to have a certain amount of square footage, but it doesn't have to be attached. You can have two lots and another lot, but you got to have a certain amount of square footage, is my understanding. Okay? My main concern is if there are going to be two dwellings on that particular lot, how many septic systems and how large is a septic system? Because we're only allowed so many, they only want so many septic systems, in my knowledge, we're only allowed, or they would only allow to have so many septic systems in that particular Nadana neighborhood because that's the older neighborhood. The other neighborhood, which is the new Nadana, is on sewer. So that's my main concern is size, how many septic systems that are actually going to be on that lot to be able to do those homes if they're, you know, going to be. And are they going to be, which I think my question has been answered, going to be permanent living dwellings or are they going to be STRs? And my problem is how many STRs do we really need down there? I mean, Nadana is already over inundated with STRs that we have now. And so it's me having a stake in the neighborhood because I live there, I work for a small transport. This is our forever home that we have. And so I'm kind of like a little hesitant about more STRs and more pressure being put as far as septic systems and the amount of people. So that's my main concern.
Can I ask a question? Where is your property as?
It is approximately one block to the east and probably two and a half to three blocks to the south of that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We're not on the ocean.
No, we're not on the ocean. No, we are a block away from the ocean, which my kids are like, oh, this is great. Mom and Daddy bought a house. Perfect. So we love it here, so.
Thank you. Now here from Rick Roush, who is opposed to this development.
Rick Ralph, 26235 Geneva Avenue, Rockaway. There are a lot of issues that could be brought up about increased population density and more traffic and more STRs and that sort of thing. But what really bothers me is the precedent that this will set. So now if you own a beachfront lot, you want to double it, one out of it, and in half you have two beachfront lots, further increasing the population of Nadana and pressure in Nadana. We still only have one exit out of Nadana. But anyway, if this is granted to split this one lot into, and I come in next week and I want to split my lot into, how are you going to tell me I can't do this? Perhaps I don't have a good reason like I want to. I'm asking you to reduce my financial burden of the development of building is possible when you build. I don't understand that as a positive. So my, if we are arguing if that would increase your residential opportunities, sure it would buy one house, but I doubt if there are lots of folks who are trying to find a place to live that they're going to buy a beach house. I mean, it's not going to affect normal people's housing situation. Anyway, so the precedent is what bothers me.
Questions? Okay. Great. All right. Well, we hear again from staff, who is the staff which to clarify or respond to any issues or questions.
I noticed somebody did want to clarify that the law in question is in the urban growth boundary. I was uncertain before I double-checked. It's in the urban growth boundary, but not city limits.
Okay.
May I follow that with a quick question? I was curious about that and it's within the urban growth boundary. So we have land use ability to affect it, but as far as STR or property tax revenue, that's all going to the county, right? If this is approved?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Hey, the applicant, may he present any rebuttal or final word? The applicant has any final comments? Please approach the podium now.
Apparently again, just to sum up his concerns about there will be septic, there will be one on each lot. There's plenty of room for a two or three-bedroom house with the septic. We've already checked that out with the county. It worked well, there's no problems there. City water and power. He's worried about precedents. Well, this is probably about the only lot on that whole Madana Beach ocean view. this is probably about the only lot on that whole Madonna Beach Ocean View that isn't developed. There might be one more farther down, but I think they're otherwise, they're already developed. So, I don't think anybody's going to tear their house down and then come and try and split it. So, I don't think that would be a big concern. So, I mean, and he's worried about more septic's out there. Well, just because he built his house before hers, I don't know how you can stop her from building because you're worried about septic's.
Thank you. Commissioner, have any further questions in staff or the applicant before the close to the next hearing?
When you do build on it, do you plan on it just being a, a family home or it's not going to be an STR?
I have four children and they all have children.
So, they're going to be using it all the time?
And to get off, you have to wait, but it might be years for them to get one.
If you want.
Okay.
Can I ask, what is the intent with the other lot? It sounds like you, you want to build a family home. What is the intent with the other lot?
Haven't thought that far. Have we?
Well, they want to build one. And then she's got a lot of kids, a lot of grandkids, and in a year or two, one of them might want to build on the other. And odds are, they wouldn't be living there full time because they've got lives other places, but odds are, yeah, they build one and then in the near future, build the other one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There being no further testimony for the commission tonight, I now close the public hearing for variance twenty-five dash one at six seventeen. Unless waived by the applicant, the city shall allow the applicant at least seven days to submit final written arguments, but no new evidence, facts, documents, dates, or testimony to support their application. Would the applicant like to submit additional written arguments within the next seven days or do you waive that right?
Waive that right.
Okay.
Besides, all that stuff goes online, T-mails.
We can deliberate.
Almost, almost.
Since the applicant has waived the right to submit additional written arguments at this point, the commission may deliberate and discuss amongst itself. During the deliberation phase, no other parties or members of the public may participate and the commissioners may only ask clarifying questions to staff. Counsel of deliberation, discussion, and consideration of the final decision on the appeal. To issue a final decision, the chair will entertain a motion.
Despite the commission has opportunity to discuss.
Right. Go ahead. Discuss.
Um, well, I'll just, it's not a question or anything. It's just a statement that we all can be aware of that, which is something that Mr. Hurley was saying that, um, Hurley, excuse me, um, the lot can be developed into a duplex or, you know, it can be what they want it to be without splitting it. If they split it, I suppose it could be, I think that if they split it, it may be smaller than the required size to build. Isn't the required for middle housing, isn't the requirement that it's fifty feet wide by a hundred feet deep? But it's more than a hundred feet deep, so maybe it's the square footage? I'm just saying that if, if it's one lot, they can do the middle housing development. If it's two lots, then it's only big enough to do the single family, well, on each of those.
I'd have to look particularly at what type of middle housing they're looking to, to develop, but yes, once the lot is split, we will reconsider that lot.
Individually.
Exactly.
Yes. Anyway, it's just part of what can happen with that lot. But there's nothing that I can say that would deter us from wanting, you know, giving permission to split it.
Great. Any other questions or discussion? Chair will entertain a motion to either approve or prove its conditions.
I move based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented. The planning commission approved variance twenty-five dash one to reduce the required lot width for the property in question with the following conditions and further move to direct staff to prepare findings or conclusions consistent, was that? Oh, isn't that the, do the top, because you're, you don't want condition two. Oh, sorry, strike that. Okay, I move that based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the planning commission approved variance twenty-five dash one to reduce the required lot width for the property in question. I further move to direct staff to prepare findings and conclusions and authorize the chair to sign an order to that effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded that the planning commission, uh, approved the motion as defined. The maker of the motion, let's see if you would like the four?
No.
Any further discussion from the commission?
Discussion?
Yes.
Again, my concern is adding two more septic systems to an area that's having trouble with their, you know, water quality already in that area. It's my understanding though, that they legally could build a duplex, um, a separate duplex that would have two septic systems anyway. Um, is that correct?
I'd have to look at it more closely regarding the septic and, uh, again, the county or public works would have a better sense of, of that.
Okay, Nancy?
Thank you. Follow up on that. It's been my understanding that the city of Rockaway Beach has zero septic because we, that's, that's our
Right.
policy. It is within the urban growth boundary. Wouldn't you have to, in any case whatsoever, go to the county? It's their determination. Which they said, I think that they went there and it was.
Again, but this is not a, a, a zoning permit or building. This is just a lot, so all that would be looked at separately.
Yeah.
Any other questions? With further discussion, let's record how the commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, citizen input on non-agenda items. Public comment is an essential part of government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing body takes into account, into consideration. However, in observation of Oregon open moving laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a minute warning by turning yellow. For the sign up sheet, anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon and we will add you to the sign up sheet. Do we have any folks watching remotely for public comment?
I don't know.
Who recognizes Dick Martindale? Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow and after four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Good, thank you. Uh, my name is Dick Martindale, eight two five five Victoria Avenue. I've seen that area of city impact, one block south of, uh, Washington Street. So, really just general comments about wetlands. Um, I know there's things on the burner now that, uh, may impact wetlands. There's going to be subsequent updates on certain city documents that could affect wetlands. And I know you guys have all heard multiple times the value of wetlands, so I'm not going to really go into that as much. As I just did some research in the last couple of days on wetland mitigation and the wetland reserve program, the federal program. And they're actually not effective. In fact, they're almost disastrous. There's some massive examples of the, I lived in Florida right on the, uh, Indian River Lagoon and that was one of the first debacles with the wetland reserve program where developers said, yes, we're going to set aside wetlands elsewhere or we're going to mitigate something. Never happened. The other huge one, which I think we all read about, which when I was a kid, was Tennessee Valley Authority. Same thing. They dammed multiple rivers there, covering those lowland wetlands. You never really traded anything. When you look into, into the wetland reserve bank, it's, it's impossible to, uh, figure out what's really done effectively. I also personally was got involved in a Union Pacific Railroad project in northern Idaho that a railroad siding was being put in, in a wetland. I organized many meetings with the county and citizens, my neighbors and the railroad. And the railroad was amused that we were even contesting this. And it turns out that we have never lost a case in the United States, in the history of the United States, not once. I almost lost forty thousand dollars on that. But my friend, who was the attorney general at the time, said, you will not prevail, so stop the appeal, which I did. And did they in fact mitigate those wetlands or set them aside? No, they didn't. It just got gobbled up. And as a consequence, the data is quite clear. We continue to lose wetlands. And again, with all the benefits that we have with wetlands, my whole point is it's got to be local. The, the federal government, you know, I worked for them for years. Bless their hearts, but it's to change that system is very, very difficult. State level, a little more possible, but still difficult, where you really have, our best bang for the buck is local. That's why I really respect what you folks are doing. I really do. I know what kind of work that is. I've done it. Um, so thank you, but I'm just going to implore you that the local control over our own wetlands is where, where you're going to get your bang for your buck. And it's done through enacting local ordinance and your, uh, land use codes, planning documents, et cetera. Does that give me one more minute?
You have one minute, that's right.
One more minute. Um, the other thing is the public sentiment towards wetlands. Uh, I looked at four different major surveys that have been done on the West Coast. Up to anywhere from ninety to ninety-three percent of the general public supports preservation of wetlands for multiple reasons. So, again, all this was, was to say during current decision making and future planning document development and updates, please keep wetlands in mind because they don't come back and once they're gone, they are gone. And unfortunately, my research said the mitigation and set asides has not worked, at least in any of the data I looked at. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A good evening.
So, for all business, there is no old business scheduled for this evening and no new business scheduled for this evening.
There's, there's new business. There is new business.
There is new business.
Oh, I thought you said there is no new business or old business.
I'm just remiss, strictly.
Oh, okay.
Yes, the commission is tasked with, uh, electing a president, vice president.
Oh, okay. Are we going to proceed with that?
And entertain a motion to elect a president and vice president.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to elect a president and vice president. We have a motion.
I have a, can we do discussion?
I'll just do discussion.
Um, who is our vice president now?
I believe I am.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right.
Are you willing to, uh, be nominated for vice chair again?
If that's the commission's preference, I'd be happy to serve, continue, to the extent that it revolved service at all.
And Chair Hassel, are you willing to, uh, entertain, uh, nomination? Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Is it, does anyone else, uh, have an interest in a nomination for one of the seats? Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Do any other discussion? Okay.
I will make a motion that we, um, elect, uh, Chair Hassel for another term and Chair, uh, Vice Chair Maxwell for another, Maxfield for another, um, term.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to, uh, retain our positions. I will ask for a vote. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lizon McGuinness?
No, no, you're, you have to vote on that.
He doesn't vote, that's right.
But I vote yes, no.
Yes, I have a vote yes for me too.
I.
It's been unanimously, uh, moved and seconded to elect Bill and, uh,
That's our business. If we would, as consideration, we could cancel the October meeting day.
You know, I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll open it up. So, when we hired our new, uh, city planner, uh, we knew he had, he had some prior engagements, some very important, uh, uh, prior engagement, um, in and around the weeks, uh, when our scheduled meeting is in, in October. Uh, and so we'd like to request that we, uh, cancel the October meeting.
Okay. October meeting is hereby canceled.
I'm happy to provide more information if you'd like as well.
Any other discussion? No? Okay. So, can I have a motion to cancel the October meeting?
I'll make a motion that we cancel the October meeting.
I will second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We'll go ahead and vote. Any other discussion? Oh, okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
And, uh, I vote yes, so the, uh, meeting is canceled. Put that on your calendar or take it off. All right. We'll move on to planning commission comments. We recognize Commissioner Johnson.
I just have a couple of comments. I did review the minutes from last month's meeting, which I was not able to attend. And I was really impressed with all the comments that the, uh, planning commission had concerning the, uh, business facade grant. I thought you all had really good ideas and it will really help, um, in our future facade grant applications and processes. So, congratulations to all of you for your good work. And also, um, today is Thursday, which means it's music and movies in the park tonight. So, if anyone wants to see Moana, it's at Phyllis Baker Park starting at seven. Well, after it gets dark, they have music first.
Yes. Commissioner Lanyon?
Thank you, um, let's see. I noticed tonight that, uh, in our ordinances that we still say multi-family as opposed to multi-unit, so just moving forward for us to be aware. When we do make changes, that we will seek to be consistent in our terminology, so change into unit. Um, requests from me, these don't highlight in blue because I can't read blue in black. Thank you. And I have to comment that, uh, each of our meetings, we're learning more and more places where we want, uh, to have better clarification. And, um, moving forward, I'm, I know you guys are doing a great job for keeping track of those so that we can follow through with some of these clarifications we need. Um, for instance, I know it's not up to us for Highway one oh one, but it certainly has occurred to me, can we adopt a policy? Can we adopt a policy for roadside configuration? Can they, can they pull straight on? Should it be parallel? Any way that we can address our 101 suggestions for if people are going to park on the side of the road? Is there a better way to do it? I don't know if we can do anything. I live right by Prano Puff and, you know, I've seen, I've seen cars towed because they weren't parked correctly next to the train track and stuff like that. But I just, I see a need for Rockaway Beach to somehow maybe adopt a policy suggesting better ways to park. All right, I think that's it, guys. Thank you for always letting me.
Yeah. And Commissioner Winchester.
Um, I, I really just want to commend the Public Works Department. The city looked absolutely sunny for the Fourth of July. And I saw people working so hard and it just made me so proud. The other thing is the other day I had an opportunity to go down to the, um, called the Old Mill RV Park down there where the new train station is being built for the train. And I took some pictures. And, and part of my reasoning was looking at accessibility for the train and in awe of the ability for a wheelchair to safely cross the tracks in that area and how challenging we were even discussing this at our last meeting, how challenging it is now when we have such wonderful accessibility and things for the beach at the wayside. And I, I just wondering out loud, I have no idea how they were able to fund such a thing. But I wonder if that's something that we could entertain is that encouragement? Because I also noted that the, um, the train ended in the Garibaldi Days. For the parade, the train is doing extra train rides and having special rates to get people to be able to take the train from Rockaway to Garibaldi to come view the parade and enjoy the festivities to go back and forth. And one of the things they noted is that there is a lift and ramp on the Garibaldi side, but not on the Rockaway side. And so in our like path to being an accessible thing, gosh, wouldn't that be? You know, what we would be even more proud of is to have that. I do have pictures and I can send them to you to, so that others can share. But it's just, I was just like, oh, this is what we need to be able to safely get things across the tracks.
Great, okay. And Commissioner Maxfield.
No, thank you. Just a couple of things. At first I just want to say welcome so heartily to our new city planner, Abram. I think you did an excellent job in your first meeting and we're really glad to have you. Uh, it seems like another excellent hire for our city. So thank you to our city manager for building a great staff and keeping things growing. Glad to have you, Abram. Thank you. Um, and then also I just want to reiterate, um, on the subject of our first hearing this evening, concerns about commercial property. I, I've, one of the reasons I was eager to join this commission originally is because I think that we need a real emphasis on preserving and promoting commercial property in our city. We have a very finite resource set of buildings that are available and there's not a lot of buildable space within the commercial zone. So, um, I, I hope that, that at all levels of our city, the professional staff, our commission, the city council will, will like start thinking more creatively and holistically about how we can develop and preserve more commercial space towards potentially mixed use requirements in the commercial zone and things like that. I, I think that, um, uh, you know, not to, to make an example of this one particular project, but in general, I think Rockaway needs a holistic approach to developing commercial space and thinking about creative ways to create more of it. Cause I think we have about 30 commercial buildings. Uh, the loss of any one is a big deal. So that's all. I hope we can work towards that over the next few years. Thank you.
Hey. And Commissioner Hess.
Um, I too wanted to welcome Abram to our city and also thank Mary for paving the way for him and, and holding your hand, I imagine, first few weeks. I also really wanted to, um, champion or thank our citizen who came and talked about the importance of wetlands in our community. That's extremely important to me and to really to everyone and to uh, this whole ecosystem, which brings me back to, you know, what's wonderful about Rockaway. Having the wetlands makes us a really wonderful place. So I want to say thanks to him for coming forward. And that's it.
And Commissioner Cole.
Um, just like, just like what Lydia said about the wetlands, like they're just so important to our community. And then I know, I was a few months ago, I was at the regular city council meeting. A gentleman got up and spoke about, um, dark skies in other cities. And that's something I would really love to see Rockaway get behind and be able to do that. Well, I believe Manzanita already does it. So there is a close by town that does, but that's something I would really like to see us get behind. And then also, you know, we just had the facade grants, which is going to be great. And we're going to have, you know, businesses downtown looking wonderful. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but there's two buildings and I'm sure everybody knows which two I'm talking about that look like they're about to fall down. That's right on 101. And so, you know, coming into town and you see all these wonderful things that's happening and then these two derelict buildings. I mean, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it because it's the owners that have that, but just, they're just such a nice.
And Planning Commission liaison McGuinness.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to sound like an echo chamber, but I want to thank our new, or welcome our new city planner. And I look forward to working with you not only here, but also on city council. And, um, just to also mention a few other, a couple of other things that that were brought up here tonight. And, and one of them was about the commercial space. Uh, those are things that can be taken care of as we go through our comprehensive plan update. So you've just mentioned that the, we're throwing these things out and wetlands are also one of the land use goals in the comprehensive plan. So just be patient and that time will come to work on all these.
Good luck on the grant applications. Going to be busy with them.
Okay. And for me, last night, um, Leslie commented about the issue of STR and ADA compliance. And, uh, I took a look at some of the previous meetings we've had as the planning commission, February, March and April. Each time we had a lengthy discussion about how to do this. One of the things I want to put out is that I'd like to see a new category rather than trying to have everything stacked as STRs in general, to have something reserved as STR ADA, where this category would be encouraging ADA compliant buildings to be created and then approved. And so I'd like to have that as a way of separating the two issues so that they're not competing with each other. At each of those meetings, I think it's been very clear that we have a lot of standards to work on. But the enemy of progress is the fine details. Uh, I think what we can do is, is get a good start with becoming rentable as a starting point and then refine this as we go along. And I also want to just comment that the Davis Chair has been memorably successful. We've had so many incredible stories about people who come back. I invite all of you to come at any time on the Friday, Saturday or Sunday when we have somebody there. Come at the time that they come back after they've done their chair and hear the comments from everybody. Family, friends telling about people running around on the sand and carving their initials in the sand. Uh, a gentleman who had not been able to go to the beach for 10 years. His husband and wife were able to go together and see that just because of Davis Chair. Also, I want to let you know that Davis Chair has received a $98,000 grant, dollar grant. And as a result, they're going to replace the chair that we have with a brand new one. And so we're, we're moving up, uh, very quickly. Jeff has commented from Davis Chair that we're probably the most exemplary implementation with our volunteers of keeping that shed and the people that are using it, uh, very happy and very successful. The church is also very happy with what we've been doing. So I'm real excited about that. Okay, may I have an emotion to adjourn our meeting?
This is official paperwork question that I'd like to know from the city. When are we going to possibly get updated? We've made a lot of changes. When we're going to get updated or do we just go online now? For the, the most recent ordinances, you know, when we adopt things, change things.
You'd like a hard copy, just, just let me know and be happy to get it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be there all along. I'll be up to the first.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Okay, and a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Moved in second to adjourn. Let's go record how the commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanion.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned at 6:46 Thursday, July 17th, 2025.